Curriculum to order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. It appears we do not have any public commenters today. So with that, we will move on to procedural items. And first up, our draft committee meeting minutes from May 27th. I will defer to my fellow trustees to see if you had any comments or corrections. Okay, I just noticed one thing which I've already shared. I'm sorry, I didn't catch this earlier, but with our new committee meeting time of 8:30 a.m. instead of 8:15 a.m., I think the header template, the header and the template hadn't yet been updated. So that's just the only thing. And so with that, that change, our minutes will be revised and reposted. Moving on to our 25, 2025 to 2026 TCAPS district course catalog update, I will defer to Jessie Houghton.
Sure, the courses that you'll see in the memo here are all courses taught in ACL. So ACL means they're taught through that platform. And these are all courses that we are building out to start the fully virtual programming over at East Middle School for the middle school students. So Mr. Ranger and his counselors went through course catalog on ACL. What we currently offer to middle schools and made sure we had comparable courses. So that is what we're adding there.
Good question. It's going to show up more in the discussion with the handbooks.
Okay.
But there's a place in there in the elementary handbook where it says K through five, you use Lincoln Center virtual courses.
Yep, Lincoln Learning, not Lincoln Center, but Lincoln Learning, yes.
You know, and so I was just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, we talked a little bit, I think it was last report curriculum, about our virtual programming. So we have a handful of students, last year we had six students that were part of the Lincoln Learning Program. They take their elementary experience virtually for a variety of reasons, from family to family. When a family asks, goes through the principal, the principal then talks to me. We want to make sure it's a perfect fit, right? That's a unique situation. Sometimes it's health related, sometimes it's family has some travel that they do on a regular basis. So they need it. So with those six unique kids, that's how we handle it.
And just for the record, there are not many platforms that do elementary. There are very few, so Lincoln's one that's been around quite a while that a lot of people have found success with. And so it's kind of a little bit of a, if it's not broke, don't fix it. It's, you know, like it really kind of, I wouldn't say it, you know, it's 100% perfect by any means. But as far as the platforms that are out there, it's one that quite a few people do use at the elementary and find success.
And TCAPS has a retired teacher around the bush that helps us and helps those kids. They do the, she brings them in to test. Any questions they have with academics, it's nice to have a support person also.
Yeah, and also we've been using Lincoln since the fall of 2020 during COVID. That's when the district started using it and yeah. If not spring of 2020, when we had to go.
Well, when I first got here.
That was still our teachers, that was still our teachers, yeah. So, okay. I just noted that there are about 18 courses here for the new middle school virtual program. Do we think this is going to be it, or might there be more additions next month?
There might be more, especially as we see what kids' interests are who are in the programs, right? But we could at least add the basics. We have added a few, remember we had a few middle school students who were online this last school year due to a variety of reasons. We had just like two or three of them, they were actually at West Middle School. So we had already added some courses for the middle school. So these are completing sort of that sixth through eighth grade run. But I would anticipate, like other things, you guys typically, we see the virtual courses. You might see an NMC course. A lot of that is driven by what kids are interested in taking and then what's available through those programs too.
Is there a deadline for their registration? Is it up until?
Same as our student registration. So we take kids, well, we take any kids that live within our jurisdiction all the time, right? We really want to get kids in obviously before school starts. So we're able to really do our due diligence, have a meeting with the counselor, set up the right, you know. But yeah, it'll follow our regular student registration deadlines.
Do you find these courses are more, they augment the whole program? Or are they more like to help because they're not doing so well with some existing in-person programming? Or is it because they want to accelerate?
It's really a wide variety of reasons. I would say probably at this point, we haven't yet seen the kid who really wants to accelerate. I say that with the exception of, and we'll see it at the high schools. They have kids who want to take a third year or fourth or sixth year of a world language that we don't have a course for, and so they're accelerating themselves. So we look to the virtual as a one-off opportunity to provide a good solid curriculum. At the middle school, it's mostly not that though. But it's a wide variety as to why students have selected to do a fully virtual schedule.
Okay, moving on to field trip requests, we have an update. I defer again to Houghton or Mr. Esper.
No, unless you want to talk about this. This one is just a change of location. This is Kerry Labonte, the German teacher at West Senior High, takes students on a German exchange. And this was a request of location that came from the school in Germany that we partner with. Two main reasons, number one is cost. The cost for not us, the other school that we partner with, they weren't able to continue the partnership because of cost. And then there was a little bit of just what's going on in our political realm right now. But the school that we currently partnered with was not wanting to continue that partnership. It was mainly due to cost, according to Kerry. But that's all right, Kerry already found another partnership school. And so our 15 students who are traveling over there, this is for next, you're from now, June. She feels like this is a great partnership, the school, she's got relationships and connections there. So I have no concerns about this and I appreciate her. She's always on top of it and has great connections over there. So anything you want to add, Mr. Esper?
No, it's just, it's fantastic trip. It's been going on for a long time. And that long time partnership that we're stepping out of, she actually had multiple other schools interested. So she was able to evaluate that a little bit and recommend the one that we went with. So it's not like it's the only other option we could find. It's like, it's a little larger city, there's a little more industry. It's kind of a STEM focused school. So she thought it'd be a really good fit for our students going over. And then of course, like Jessie mentioned, the cost piece for the other school is this is a true two-way exchange. So it needs to be a school too, that they're going to send their kids here in September to stay in Traverse City.
I have admired this field trip from a distance for many years. So I'm excited to see it continue. And as you noted, I think a key piece too, is that for our parents, the cost is the same.
And it's, it's a national kind of program. My daughter did it in Chapelville.
All right, moving on to the 2025 to 2026 elementary and secondary student parent handbooks. I will defer to Dan Feisberg and Jessie Houghton.
Yeah, so this year, there was not a major overhaul in the handbooks. I will let you know some of the changes that we, we did some cleanup on some language changes. We added in some AI wording into the handbooks that was vetted by our principals and by Evan and his team. We also had to update and sort of realign all the policy numbers with all the policy changes that you guys have seen come through the full board. But there was no major adjustment or change to the handbook and sections.
I agree in either handbook. Same process where we have a group of elementary principals that go through that, look at little wording, some attendance things, and also the AI idea, nothing major.
I spent several hours going through these yesterday. And one of the things I noticed is in the very beginning where you mentioned the board, you've got Erica's name misspelled in the first part where she's vice president. And then she's listed again as a trustee. So you've got eight board members in both handbooks.
Erica called me and wanted two votes, so.
But she's spelling her name different.
Well, that was kind of incognito a little bit.
Yeah, well, she won on that one.
We'll get that one fixed, thank you.
That's a small thing, you know. In elementary, I was going to ask, there's a list of things that kids should kind of leave at home. Don't take to school, there's a discussion of we're not going to replace them, all that kind of thing, the cost. We don't put cell phones there. And the next thing, the next section is the cellphone policy. And I was thinking for elementary, why don't we just say we strongly recommend, unless you have an immediate need, leave your cellphone at home as well. And we've just never done that.
Yeah, and the policy is actually personal electronic devices. So they're smartwatches and all the other.
Yeah, there's a place where it says PED.
I appreciate that thought, but I don't think that was the intent of the board. I know you brought that up at the time, and if that is the intent of the board, that needs to be clarified. When we did the cellphone policy, it was not to encourage people to keep them home. It was discussed, but it was not intently given the board that that was something they wanted to endorse.
K through eight, I believe it was that stay away.
No, it was.
Yeah, I agree with you very much.
Away for the day, no, not at home.
Backpack or in a locker.
Which is different then, that's my point, is what you're saying is different.
And if you scroll up, Kelly, scroll up here. So in that paragraph, it says TCAPS will not assume electronic devices should not be brought to school. But the list is those items who are deemed inappropriate. I think that's sort of the distinction that Dr. Van Wagner is talking a little bit about. A kid might bring their cellphone to school and check it into the office or leave it powered down because there's a certain reason why they need it after school or something like that. These are the things that we would deem as dangerous.
They're all kind of violent, you know, fire and sightings.
Kids like, you know, elementary kids bring a ton of trinkets to school, stuffed animals, turtles.
Fidget spinners.
So we just try to say hate to leave them. But to your point, you did bring that up, that was a discussion point for sure. But that, to me at least, wasn't the final decision of the board. It was, you know, the away, so not, you know, once you hit the door, that's not to be seen. But, you know, and I wouldn't be against it if the board wanted to go that far. But that is different than as far as we went in the policy.
I almost would look at that again because I know at least two, actually I think four board members that thought that elementary should clearly be away for the day.
Yes.
Away for the day, meaning not at school, because that's the way the literature presented.
So you're saying not brought at all.
Not brought at all.
So there is, so there is a handful or more kids, right, that have after-school events that need some kind of communication where office phone is not available.
And that is fine.
Well, they have to bring it to school to have it after school.
But when I was talking to a kid in elementary school at the time, I said, well, what are you doing with your cellphone? You know, I thought she was leaving it at home. Oh, no, we all bring them, we all bring them, they're in our backpacks, you know. And we bring our backpacks to class, she said, so they're not away for the day.
No, but, but I mean, per that last paragraph on the screen, if they are powered off and stored in the backpack or a locker during the school day, that is acceptable.
Right.
I mean, I think that's the key thing.
Elementary kids don't bring backpacks to classes. Elementary kids use their lockers, getting to six, six twelve, they use backpacks. But elementary powered off in their locker was a policy. That's a policy they continue to follow. I just hesitate because if you have a latchkey kid or someone who needs that phone after school to get a ride from their parent, and what ancient policy says, no one can bring their phone to school.
Let's be very careful with policy and practice, there's two different things. Our practice is that.
But I just want them, if possible, to get into the habit of keeping it as a tool rather than as a constant companion.
Yes.
You know, and I think we should do everything to really instill that. I think that that's helpful.
It's often used, at least in my experience, in emergency purposes for contacting a parent after school, pickup changes.
Sure, I understand. And that's why we split the two. My feeling was if you have car keys, you should have access to a cellphone. But, you know, we were saying, this is, this is why we split them at K through eight.
Right.
You know, and we were seeing policies that were similar to them.
Yeah.
You know, it's not that I want it extreme or absolutely no circumstance, but just a real let this be kind of matter of fact, that you're comfortable not having a cellphone at your back and call.
I do think to Dan's point though, the after-school issue is a big one. And unfortunately, you know, kids could be on the bus even in elementary school and using their phones because we did make that decision as a board that we don't want the poor bus driver to have to police that while he or she is driving, you know. So, you know, it's not, I don't think there's any perfect policy that's perfectly implemented and enforced, you know. But we tried to draw the lines where we thought it was reasonable. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with students being encouraged to leave their cellphones. But it's, it's pretty hard, you know, to tell families like they're prohibited and.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we intended to do.
Yeah, okay.
So, all right. One more question on this, and that is, we only do report cards twice a year?
That's a master.
Really?
That's K-12.
Whereas in high school, they can every week look up information.
Every day.
Yeah, just about.
Every hour.
Is there anything similar? Because it seems to me when you're getting your foundational learning in, you'd really want to know when your kid began to not connect with the learning.
But they're not getting grades, they're getting numbers. It's a little bit different than grading, like in the middle school, high school. Elementary is on a one through four. So it's not as solid, you know, what's being input. But that's why we have conferences early in the fall.
But you only have conferences twice a year.
Correct.
And you only do report cards twice a year.
The midpoint between the comp, between the first report card. So conferences would be like in October, November, then they get the report card. So there's time to improve. And then again, in February, March, time to improve.
Okay, because it seems like it'd be real easy to kind of, a kid that's doing, just getting by, may not, the parent won't get the flag on that, that that could be better.
Yeah, I know that unlike secondary, right? Because secondary has the power school with the parent portal, right? And you can see grades. The only grades we have in elementary is our tag. Our tag program does actual letter grades. Outside of that, you know, with a classroom, you know, a secondary teacher might have over 100 students. You know, an elementary classroom has up to, you know, 30-ish, you know, or less. And I think that communication happens on a more regular basis. So if there is a student struggling or there is some red flags, I know between the teacher, the principal, social worker, people doing intervention, I think that communication is on enough of a regular basis where it substitutes in for that portal.
Because I just think, you know, when I was a kid, when my kid was a kid, we saw a formal back and forth more frequently. And a lot of it was tied with a number that indicated sort of like how well they were reacting. It was more of an attitudinal thing. And then the grade, which was sort of like where you were academically in relation to different subjects. You know, for a while it was the S for satisfactory, the S plus, as well as a check.
Those type of things still would come home. Checked work still would come home. So you as the parent would still see what your kid is doing. And a lot of elementary classrooms have homework that would go back and forth and seem.
Then parents sign and you realize when the kid is not bringing it home, because you're not. because you're not getting to sign return acknowledgement.
It might not be signed necessarily, but there's usually an established pattern for that purpose, at least when I taught, was to establish some responsibility, and so parents had an idea of what they were doing in math. And, you know, these are some gaps, these are some places that you can help, or wow, your kid's really knocking it out of the park there. So if you're not seeing homework on whatever the established date is, then that's kind of a clue to you as a parent.
Yeah.
You have not had homework in.
'Cause I think that when we talk about academic achievement, we need to make sure that we've got those pathways that are really good if you wanna do cooperation with folks at home.
Yeah, I'll just I'll just add, as a parent, my kids, you know, are now in high school, but it wasn't that long ago, they were little and the amount of marked up home, you know, graded homework that came home was voluminous, there's so much paper still. K through five, and that's okay, I'm old school, I don't want it to be electronic at that age. But they do, they bring, their backpacks are full of of papers that have been graded, so, you know, parents can see incrementally what's going on. Um and then the parent-teacher conferences do conveniently fall like a little into not, I don't know if it's like exactly the midpoint of each semester, but it is partway in, so that's a checkpoint for the.
Yeah, it just seems like it's so far fewer than what I was used to either as a kid or as a parent.
Yeah.
This is so much.
The district moved away from quarters to semesters just a couple of years ago.
Not a good hack, you know, I got more grades going to college 'cause you had a midterm and a final, but you had it each semester. And so it seems like you could really lose some of the more quiet kids.
You know, I I find that the report cards aren't necessarily as far as a communication for progress on standards, it's more documentation. When a parent receives a report card, there should be nothing on that report card that's a surprise, right? There's communication going for the whole semester, uh especially when you talk about students falling, you know, between the cracks or any of that, that's where our tier-two intervention comes in, and parents get communication about their students being involved in tier-two. So a lot of our report cards, which is why we went down to two, because it is a process for teachers to do report cards. It's a lot of time, um and that's why we went to two, because we found that this documentation was a much more efficient way to do it for twice a year to three times. So the communication about how the student is doing in the room is not necessarily a report card based, but rather, you know, that eighteen weeks leading up to it.
Okay, and one more, you did two, actually, two more. One is Lance Morgan is referred to when uh in the section on attendance and credits. And I was thinking you might wanna put the current principal in. And then the other thing is in the section on athletics, uh when they were talking about heat, dealing with heat, I'd throw marching band in there as well, because I've seen marching band competitive uh out on the field and the kids drop their.
That heat index.
Yeah, so it should apply not just to the sport.
Yeah, we just need to, I I would, I need to read that second, uh Michigan High School Athletic Association has rules and procedures for managing heat. If we wanna apply those to other kids who are outside, I just need to think about that and what the implications and like, how do we, our band directors are educated on sort of where we're at, and anytime, it just happened a few days ago when it was really hot, we got on his cabinet and we were texting and making sure that our athletic directors are all aware, where are our latchkey, where, you know, um. I I just wanna be cautious of that because there are actual guidelines that our athletic directors are trained in through MHSA.
We'll we'll have an MHSA section because that's kinda mandated that we have, but we'll figure something else for other activities as well.
I I was figuring that.
We'll figure that out.
Yep.
Could I throw one more question on you? And that is, is um only one who would pay for parking at the high schools, students? Are they the only ones that have to buy a parking permit?
Yes. Because when we have our students park versus take the school transportation, um it does cost us more for supervision and for ensuring we have the those available for kids. Um and so we want our kids to register their cars, so if there are issues, we actually know who's on our campus. Um and we do spend some time patrolling the campus to make sure that during the school hours, it's only our students who are parking in our parking lots and not kids from other schools, random strangers from the community, people there to, you know, access kids or or our property, or just people who think it's a public parking lot that we really are trying to, you know, maintain safety and security. So we do want our kids to register cars, it's something that Joe and Ben and I have worked a lot on, and it helps those guys with safety and security when there's an issue to right away be able to know, um you know, what students are involved and how do we support.
It is a modest amount, like ten dollars.
A modest amount, yep, yep. The only um addition would be for the central students if they choose um for open campus, which then means they're driving on and off of campus multiple times throughout the day, there's an additional fee for that. But that only applies to a small group of students, the juniors and seniors.
So the students that would do career tech might be in that group?
They might be in that group, um or they can ride the bus and not be in that group. Because we do provide transportation to them from Career Tech Center every day, and we have quite a few students, two bus worth uh at Central High School. Anything else you guys wanna add about?
All right, anything else in the handbook that you'd like to highlight? No.
What did he ever warn him?
No, those are some good ones, though, those are some good catches.
I didn't catch Lance's name, that's a good one, Ben.
Yep.
Gotta have eagle eyes for them. Okay, um informational items, first up is sex education curriculum updates. I will defer to Brittany Kay and Dan McGee.
Yes, before I pass it over to Dan, um just to adhere to the legal obligations that are set forth by MDE, TCAPS will hold two public hearings for this information at the following board meetings, which will occur on Monday, July fourteenth, as well as Monday, um August twenty-fifth. So now I will defer um to Dan McGee, who is our district sex education coordinator, to present on the uh Sex Education Advisory Board's proposed curricular changes.
All right, uh this year we have quite a few more than uh some years, we had a excessively hardworking uh Sex Ed Advisory Board. Um some of these things like uh the fifth grade video, the first one. Are we gonna watch all the videos today?
No, they're they're available, so I had emailed the board previously that they are the password protected, so if you wanna see one, just make an appointment uh with Tammy, and she'll get you set up for it.
Yeah.
And same way to the public.
Tried to see them and.
So so our fifth grade HIV uh change, that is, uh this video and the the all the guidelines and all the work and all that stuff is is from Michigan Model. And that is available to our staff um through our ISD. They train, they train our staff, I've been at those trainings, and they they can provide that. This came from from the fifth grade teachers, when I asked for feedback, they were like, yeah, we need to update, we just went to this Michigan Model, so much better video, and we were using older versions and stuff, so we updated, uh and it came from, it came from staff. So each one of those documents on here, um and the video are all part of that package from from them. Most of them are teacher resources, a few of them are uh like the student promises, where a few things are things you do with at home uh with with uh, you know, that you can send home, you were talking about sending things home. Kids go through the program, boom, that that particular document can be sent home. Do you need any, any questions about the fifth grade HIV? Or that package, or do we wanna look?
No, I mean, I think you you set it up well. Um I remember last year, there were, there was quite a bit of update to HIV and AIDS, and I think, right, there were some members of the Sex Ed Committee who had that expertise, right?
We have a well-rounded, we have a number of medical people on there, we have a minister, we have uh a number, a few, a few educators, and more than half are parents. So we we have the criteria we have to, we have to do. I think last year we may have presented our updates to our um uh what do you wanna call it, the way we operate under those guidelines, I'm trying to.
Yeah, bylaws.
The bylaws, yeah. We we did our bylaws last year, and last year we had to do an evaluation, and we did our evaluation. A lot of our changes this year were a result of our evaluation from the year before. Next year again, I get to present our evaluation, 'cause it's an every-other-year thing. So, um this, the, I'm not gonna get into other things other than what we're presenting to change. So this is our uh presenting the change in our, in our fifth grade, yes.
Of course, the last time I looked at the mortality and morbidity data, um HIV was definitely there, and it was homosexual uh area where the greatest.
There's a larger, there's a larger population.
Which is where the population uh is showing where the the incidence of infection is. That I don't see in the literature, I see the literature as being benign across the population.
It doesn't only affect that, it affects everyone, but yes, in this, in the fifth grade level, I I don't think we're we're addressing it that way, um.
In other words, we don't have to say.
We don't have to.
Sexuality versus heterosexuality, just say it exists.
I I spent more time actually looking at some of the high school.
Yeah, but we're, right now, we're talking about the elementary, so.
I understand.
For my mindset was.
But I'm I'm saying here, we've really expanded that area, but we haven't really talked about where the focus of infection is is currently, and.
The 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 focus of infection could be a pregnant woman.
Oh, I understand.
It is a variety of people. Now, is there a large, larger um disproportion into a certain group? Yep.
Yeah.
And 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 that is, I believe, is discussed at the high school level.
Well, the big case in the nineteen eighties was Ryan White. And he was a young man who, he wasn't even a young man, he was a kid, who got HIV through the blood because he was, he he had hemophilia. And he had frequent transfusions, and he got it through the blood.
For Ash, the same thing.
And and so they've they've cleaned up a lot of the transfusion.
Yes.
I mean, it is, it's more stringent.
Yeah, and and compared to the eighties, I mean, we can, we can discuss Magic Johnson.
Uh yeah, that's what I think of nineteen ninety-two.
Healthy he is today, when he came out that he had it, it was a death sentence.
Yeah.
So a big thing you'll see in the in the high school is that we are talking about the treatment and medications that are available now that make it bas- basically so you can't even pass it. You can get the viral load that low, undetectable.
In the latency area.
And that doesn't, doesn't matter uh what type of sexual activity they they do, if they're, if they're treated, diagnosed, treated, it is not cured, but it is getting uh, the medical advances have been amazing, and we teach that because one of the things we have to do is teach medically accurate information.
And and I I appreciate that, I do. Uh and one of your most useful slides is the one where you show that antibiotics, where you can use an antibiotic towards a bacteria, is curable. When you are using the antibiotic towards a virus, it is not cured.
Yep, that's in our, that's in our STIs.
Yes.
Yes.
And that is on the money, you know. And part of the reason so much money's gone into research, uh HIV research, is because we're looking at viruses as being the next really, really big area, I think, for a lot of antibiotics.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments about fifth grade before Dan moves on to middle school?
Okay, so in the middle school, um we looked at, we looked at Michigan Model again. And we thought, okay, what, we actually, we looked at it at high school and didn't adopt it at the high school level. But at the middle school, we looked at it again and we said, okay, we liked the video. Uh there was a slideshow that has some uh facts that go with it, that worked very well. Um and then some other teacher resources, the fact sheet, uh and whatnot. Those things can also, not only just be teacher resources, but part of the unit where they're presenting to kids, and it and it's up to, up to date medically factual information, so. Middle school questions.
Uh just quickly, can you remind us, what, um through what classes do the students get this health education?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um we're asking for it to be approved for seventh and eighth grade, currently, it's taught in the eighth grade. But there has been discussion in the Sex Ed Advisory Board that we could be back here next year saying, you know what? We feel that the, what is currently taught in seventh grade, which is more puberty and anatomy and physiology, could be moved to the sixth grade. We haven't made that suggestion, we're not bringing that forward to you today, it's been a discussion. So being, kinda thinking, forward-thinking, if we take what's in eighth grade and we go, well, maybe we're gonna teach some of this in seventh grade, or we're gonna, we're gonna do this in seventh and this in eighth, and that would be possible future. So this is technically an eighth grade class still, um and it would be taught there this next year, but we're asking for seventh grade and above for the materials to be able to be used.
Is there a question?
Yeah, is it in their gym class?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's in it, it's in an HPE class.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I mean, just, you know, big picture, over the years, I've heard from a lot of kids, you know, they get exceptions to gym, and maybe this is only at the high school level, not K through eight, but I I just worry about.
What happens in the middle school too.
Yeah, I worry about just getting a hundred percent coverage, I mean, I do wanna make sure every kid gets this education, along with the other health education.
There is an opt-out, kids also.
Well, there there is parental opt-out, I understand that.
I would love a hundred percent coverage too, but they also, we have testing out at the middle school. So there are kids that test out, um and yes, parents, it's an opt-out program all the way through.
But it's a state requirement, right, that kids get this, or is it just a state requirement that the district offer it?
Uh it's, it's, we have to, we have to provide it, but it can be opted out.
Yes.
Including test out.
The HIV has to be offered at each each building level, so we do, we do teach it in uh fifth grade currently.
So anything you can do working with your committee to try to identify ways to get, deliver the education? I guess the only gap we could close would be that test-out population. I don't know how, you know, disseminating the material to them before they test out or after they test out, I mean, we do what we can, right?
Yeah, the test-out one would be be interesting, the opt-out one.
That you can't touch.
The opt-out one, we don't have to worry about because we, what we do in our opt-out, like when I notify my parents um that I'm going to be teaching Sex Ed, I give them two, three, four weeks' notice. I also get them as many documents as they possibly can view and see, and they can make those decisions. We're not, you know, we're upfront, so even if a child doesn't, their parent opts them out, that parent still has the curriculum and most of the documents and curriculum there for them.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
And it's also on our website, as much as we can.
Now, this is um physical health education.
Health and physical education, so at the, at the, at the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and then the high school, we have a class called HPE. So at the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, general physical education class. They also offer weights and conditioning, uh middle school, help me, are they doing?
We have weights and conditioning.
They do weights, but.
Activities, most of them do weights and.
They do sports activities, maybe.
Most of them do weights and conditioning, that's kind of other, yeah.
And we have a sports activity at the high school too, but the weights kids and the sports kids, whoops, that's not part of the curriculum, it's the HPE, so.
So my question is, how extensive do you do cardiac uh issues and diseases? I mean, this is, this is big.
A big, well, Sex Ed is one unit.
Yeah, I would say that's beyond Sex Ed, so.
At the, we have units like a fitness unit that teaches the cognitive part of being fit. At the, we have units like a fitness unit that teaches the cognitive part of being fit. We have nutrition and things, but we also are physically active and a big part of our program has been our, our endurance and our cardiovascular fitness. We use the Pacer test, which is broadly used across the country as one of our, our ways of measuring. I give that test each month so I can, the kids can see growth, I can have conversation. And in between those tests, we're doing work to, to help them grow. So cardiovascular fitness, that's our number one killer, so we're trying to address cognitively and physically.
And it, it's, um.
Let me just note that we have a lot on the agenda, so we need to focus on the sex ed right now.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of comparatively how much of the attention of the class is focused in sex ed and, and especially when, you know, we're not saying that the, the group that seems to be where HIV is growing is actually the homosexual population. And it's, it's male homosexuality is where it is.
We'll ask them, the committee, to take a look at that for next time.
Yep.
And take consideration and we'll all make a decision.
Definitely look at it if you're looking at accuracy.
Dan, did you want to say anything more about the high school level?
Uh, the high school level, there are, um, one of our evaluation things we decided is that we decided we need a high school quiz. Cause that will give us feedback on what kids have learned and not learned. That, that's been in the discussion for a couple of years. This year, we developed that quiz and we went through that. The teen pregnancy, um. There are limit, there were limited changes in that. Uh, one of the, one of the, the first slide, are you ready to be a parent? We had a number, we had a couple of people on our board this year that said, well, what are the answers to those questions? And I go, well, those questions are to prompt discussion and the teacher does. Well, they thought those should be in there, so we added, uh, a number of slides pertaining to those with, with what it costs. The role of fatherhood, the amount of time. And then waiting to be ready. The impacts of teen parenting were another thing that came up in there and I think we had a couple additional slides. And then we had an additional slide of, uh, the shared responsibility. So there was just a few additions in the teen pregnancy. The HIV and AIDS, um, we had two videos. Links that are far superior to the video we had. And they're fairly short. Statistics, we had an update, so we have two slides on the statistics that we had update. Then we have a video, the new videos. Uh, update on facts of HIV. And then we got into the, we updated the therapy, the anti, uh, retro viral therapies. And then, uh, the other video, there was a few graphic changes, same information we had before. But, um, just better, a better graphic. And I think that was the end of, oh, we had a, we had one more graphic at the end with, that was a, was an addition.
Yeah. Dan, I, can you just back up to the one of, uh, ways to transmit? Looked like there was a couple kissing. One right before that. Here? Yeah, I mean.
Closed mouth kissing, okay, interesting.
Yeah. I just wanted to do that.
Yeah, closed mouth kissing is a, is a discussion topic. Cause one of the ways they test is an oral swap. And I explained to the kids and we, we actually talked about dental hygiene at that time too.
Tradition.
Yeah, I think in the, the elementary, the fifth grade one, you really focused on blood and it's not just blood.
No, they're, yeah.
Any fluid, any body.
Bodily fluids.
That's why you put on gloves and bleach.
Okay, great, thank you.
We have those videos, the, the STI had one, um, the proposed sex in the law changes. We did have an Aaron, Aaron's Law video. And the big changes in the proposed sex in the law. After sexual assault was sexual abuse. And that felt, we, we put that under three topics, Aaron's Law. If you watched, did you watch the video?
I didn't see that one, I saw the one with the lady who got it, I think through her husband.
Okay, this, Aaron is one that was sexually abused by a stepfather or someone in the family. You should watch the video. It's her story and she's dedicated the rest of her life so she can educate and this not happen to others. Cause she didn't, she was quiet. And she was quiet until her younger sibling said something and then she goes, oh, this is happening to her too. And that. It's, um, that was it. So, uh, human trafficking has become a bigger and bigger, uh, topic. And, uh, so we had some resources on human tra- uh, trafficking and how that falls under sexual abuse. And then the other part was the impacts of pornography. Everyone has access to pornography at a very young age. And there was some very good resources, uh, that board members brought to, to us that we were able to grab information from, uh, to present to the kids on, on what this is actually, how this actually impacts us.
And I think that pornography is important.
And at the high school level, we thought this was appropriate and important. Actually, the impact of porn and the, and the, the sex trafficking have been a topic for the last three years at least. And it's just been a work in progress trying to get something presentable, um, with research-backed stuff.
Yeah, I've, I've had discussion with elementary kids over porn, that, you know, get ahold of someone's magazine. Talk about what does privacy.
Usually it's online, that's the thing, you know? When I was growing up, it was like, there might be a, a neighbor who's got a stack of Playboys. Now, kids connect on their phones. And I'm reading the anxious generation and, you know, we've protected kids more in the physical world less than the virtual world and there's.
So much one of those.
So much in the.
Yes.
Such a world for kids to access, yeah.
So any questions about the high school?
No, great, and great job, thanks to your committee as always, I know a ton of work goes in this every single year. And so please pass on our.
Thank you.
To your committee. Okay.
And Dan will see you again, you'll be at the board meeting?
The fourteenth.
Yep.
And then the following.
Thank you.
And then the following month.
We're good. Thank you, Dan, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to our toward curriculum learning series this month, it is student achievement data, so. Dan, Jesse and Brittany.
Yeah, so shifting gears a bit, uh, looking at kicking things off with elementary spring. We're going to focus on spring, uh, NWA achievement data for our, uh, elementary schools. So just a quick review here about what percentiles mean and how we deal with them broadly. These are some, just some broad statements about, um, each percentile and what can support students get. So five different percentile ranges that we address with the NWA test. Generally speaking, this is a big generality because this varies quite a bit, but over the sixtieth percentile usually correlates with some type of MSEP proficiency. So that's definitely our green and our, our blue band. So when I was going through this today and we discussed a little bit with Josie yesterday, the idea of this kind of presentation and the lens I'm taking with strategic planning and developing goals. So when I was, when I was looking at this data and going through it, I was thinking, you know, how can we develop a goal around, um, elementary data? So I specifically want more students in those green and blue bands because that is where our students generally show proficiency. So how can we develop a goal around that? Um, after that, when we look at those other bands, then comes our different supports. And again, this is a general twentieth to fiftieth is that tier two support. Not every student that's, um, in those bands receive a tier two support, but generally speaking, that's where that would land as far as in that tier two support for reading and math can look as in classroom, small group or being pulled out. Um, and then below the twentieth, again, a generality, not every student below the twentieth receives a tier three support. Usually it's even below the tenth is where we like to see that for special ed. But below that twentieth percentile, um, is where we start to see more special ed support. One other thing I add is to, um, keep in mind the algorithm in twenty twenty-three for math. So when you look at this data from twenty twenty-three on our math scores looks substantially better. I think that is some of the things we're doing in our elementaries this year for the first time. Uh, every elementary did, uh, math data meetings and every elementary had a tier two support in place. We use Delta Math. So that was done school by school in the past, but every, our eleven elementaries are now all doing that. But specifically, I included a link to NWA, um, if you ever want to know more about it, but, uh, it's quite in depth. Generally speaking, what it is, is, uh, it's an adaptable test, right? So as you get questions right or wrong, the test changes. What they used to do is you get questions more and more right, they used to move grade level. So fifth graders would then get, uh, questions from a sixth grade curriculum and that would affect their score. Now they're keeping it within the grade level more, so we're seeing more challenging questions, but it's, it was in their same grade level. So naturally, they may be getting more questions right and so they're more proficient. But that's what we want to see, right? It does make sense that we want to see proficiency at grade level, not necessarily above grade level as far as using that data. So questions over, over you before we dive in there. Okay, so we start out, um, I grouped the data instead of doing every single grade level with a different slide. We'd have, um, you know, about twenty slides to go through, so just as again, kind of combining the data. I did change this yesterday, we do include JK two. So when we, uh, label a student here at TCAP as junior kindergarten, they are actually labeled as a kindergartner as far as state reporting, so we included them in this data, I did change the label to say JK two. So one thing about when each slide I go through and I look for some type of, um, trend in, in the data. This particular one, I do see a slow rise as we look at that low line, right? The red, which is the direction we necessarily don't want to go. But I think that's largely a part, and I'm going to, in future presentations and moving forward in the fall with my elementary principals, we're going to pull that JK data out because I think as our JK numbers grow, that's going to influence, um, how that data looks proficiency wise.
So let me just ask here, is that, so this is because junior kindergarteners are those who are eligible to be in kindergarten, but for whatever reason.
Yeah.
The parent and teachers decide they need junior kindergarten. So in the past, those kids were excluded from the data.
Well, in the past, we didn't have it, right? We didn't necessarily have a junior kindergarten.
Preschool.
You know, when you think of, we offer it in every building.
Yeah, yeah.
A hundred fifty kids, that's a, that's a percentage.
It's much more of a play-based curriculum versus what we do in kindergarten.
Right, but it would seem that would make your kindergarten numbers better as a result.
So it would be interesting to pull it out.
Well, even if you leave it in, you're going to have a balance, right? It's going to blend because you've got the advanced kindergarteners in their second year, right? So your scores.
I don't know if it outweighs it that much because JK, um, this is as low as some of those students are. And like Dr. Van Wagenen said, it's not that necessarily that academic focus. So I, 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 I agree with what you're saying, we're going to see our kindergarten scores go up hopefully because of the JK experience for some kids, but I don't know if it's apples for apples.
Right, because you're going to end up with kids that won all their letters and their numbers.
That are ready for kindergarten, yeah.
Yeah, well, they.
Yeah.
Yeah. And junior kindergarten wasn't started till the twenty twenty-four school.
Well, it started, we, we kind of have, have, have slowly, um, brought it into each school. Like I believe the first couple of years was just in a couple of schools and now, now it's a. Last year, the first year, we said it was going to be in every building.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So these are percentages, not numbers, so it reflects five years, okay, of junior kindergarten, okay.
And then the second thing to look for is we, if we talk about strategic planning is that, a- again, going back to the previous slide, the idea that we want to see that yellow and below, we want to see that to go down. Right, because the lower the scores, the kids, we don't correlate to proficiency. So eventually, when we talk about strategic planning and goals, is combining the green and the blue number, the yellow, orange and red number would be a good idea and s- just to show that proficiency line.
Well, the thing though is as your blue line gets bigger, it also gives you a sense of the way the sophistication of your learners are going for more involved work. Advanced is a correct term.
More in depth.
Yeah, thank you, I like that, going this way rather than.
Right.
Fine.
So as we move through it, obviously, one other trend besides looking at that yellow line and below is the, the trend that in the last five years, we haven't seen much change. I mean, if I go from slide to slide, it's hard to decipher grade level and subject any slide I go to. Um, and that's obviously something that we want to address, uh, as a curriculum team. In some ways, we're doing that and this is for all of our data, uh, obviously, we're changing our reading, our English language arts curriculum. So that's a, we're going all in on CKLA to, to help these numbers change. We've, we've brought research in front of the board specifically for economically disadvantaged, uh, which tend to fall in those orange and red bands and how we can address these numbers.
Have you ever looked at this also by the kids that have, uh, five oh fours? The different, um, uh, plans that some of the kids are, have you?
Yeah, we, we did see some of the data you brought forward and so a, a lot of those kids was especially um, was tier three support, supporter, IAPs are going to fall in those, in those orange and red bands. Not all, because that, every IAP addresses learning. Uh, five oh four is a little more broad in that, you know, a lot of kids with just health concerns have five oh four that are not related to learning whatsoever.
Which is cool.
Which is not, yeah, it, it's the idea of, of why that law is in place. But, you know, outside ADHD, you know, that's where I saw a lot of those five oh fours, which would impact learning, um, that we'd have some accommodations around. Uh, I would say even maybe the majority of plans are more health-related. Uh, so in a discussion, when we talk about strategic planning and I, I was just talking to Tiffany about this, it came out yesterday in our one-on-one with Josie, is that, uh, we, we might look at some, some strategic planning, the goal around special education.
Yeah, I was thinking even, it's almost like a Venn diagram. And you've got the income, you've also got the different special needs within your population. And to see where the most overlap is if you're targeting certain, um, programs.
And to give credit where it's due, that was because you gave us input.
No, no, it's because I got that information from Tiffany.
It goes around and around, but I mean, your input on the strategic.
It's Tiffany. Worse on it.
Yeah, yeah. And we do have, uh, significant student population with IAPs, I think it's about thirteen percent. Yeah, of our, of our students with disabilities, so, okay, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, so a- as you can see, the distinct difference when we move into math, uh, in the last two years, we, we do see a little more in our blue bands for sure. And it's JK two, and you'll see the same in three, five, where that band increases substantially based on some of those changes in the test. It'll be nice to have, uh, well, we benchmark this as far as starting out data for strategic plan, starting in the next spring. Uh, they're using, they're moving through a new norm set, so every five years, NWA does a new national norm. The twenty twenty-five is coming up, I don't know how that'll impact our data necessarily, but it'll be nice to have. Starting with our spring data, uh, twenty twenty-six would be a good starting point as far as, uh, what our growth looks like year after year.
And we're not the first cadre of states apparently, there's another group of states that started with that new norming earlier than us.
Yeah, as far as the, um, the algorithm was hit, started in twenty twenty-three, but the norms will actually start this fall. So it'll be, right in the fall, we'll be able to see how those norms impact our scores. And then we have a, you know, that baseline as far as when we talk about putting any type of strategic goal or percentage as far as achievement goes, we have a nice, a point that we know that, that those norms aren't going to change now for five years. So we won't see stuff like this, right? Where it'll be inflated or de- the deflated numbers based on the assessment, more based on what we're doing in classrooms. So we won't see stuff like this, right, where it'll be inflated or de- the deflated numbers based on the assessment, more based on what we're doing in classrooms. And then we move to six, seven, um N W A reading and math. Again, I know that Jesse and Brittany have been working um this summer a lot on moving into more intervention. For our middle schools, it was hit and miss as far as, you know, when I was lead principal at East Middle, uh what we had F T E for, so we used to just run um some math intervention, it was different on both sides, so. If you wanna speak to that more, but I know that the intervention in middle school is definitely more robust and more across the board in both West and East Middle. That was uh our N W A spring achievement, if you have any more specific questions that you have.
Yeah, just, I would just uh say for context, um you brought up the the C K L A curriculum for elementary, E L A, um but then the middle school math just remind us like when we adopted new curriculums so that we can kind of like look at the data and, you know, have that in mind.
That actually be very interesting on future graphs is to name the curriculum underneath, even though I know that the curriculum isn't the whole ballgame. Right, as we begin to look at putting money into some of these curriculum, which are hands down not cheap, it would be kinda good to have that.
Yeah, so C P M was adopted a few years ago, right, for middle school math?
Uh yeah, I would say probably on year four of it, yeah. And that's our curriculum that we use sixth grade through Algebra II, so all the way through eleventh grade. Um that was a change, I was leading the math uh back in the days and that was uh, it's nice that we have the same curriculum, sixth through eleventh grade. When you think about what curricula or what subject matter is really progressive, skill-based, um and you need strong coherence, uh mathematics like is that, so we have math expressions, which is uh, you know, K five, and then we have C P M that picks up sixth grade through Algebra II. C P M has two separate curriculums in the middle school, they have what are called the C C's, so C C one, C C two and C C three. We use that for accelerated students, um accelerated math, six and seven, and that feeds into their Algebra one curriculum that we use in eighth grade and we use that in ninth grade. And then they came out with a new curriculum called I C um that was supposed to lower the reading level and be uh more appropriate for students who are on grade level or slightly below. We adopted that, uh we piloted at the sixth grade year, we had great results. Uh this last year, we adopted it six, seven, eight. Uh the teachers at eighth grade really didn't feel like it was a good fit. Um and so we actually are going back to the C C curriculum for eighth grade on level at the next year. It's the same umbrella company though, just so we're clear. C P M owns, they just have two different kind of branches of their curriculum, so they're very similar as far as it does matter that like the layout and the verbiage and all of that is pretty consistent so that kids aren't struggling with that versus the actual mathematical thinking, right? You want them to struggle with how I'm, how am I doing math, not what are they asking me and how is this laid out, you know?
Yeah, so every year when you get these new data results, um you're probably with your team, your curriculum leaders, um and every teacher leaders, I should say, looking at like is you're evaluating is how as well as the curriculum working versus, you know, are there additional supports through professional development or coaching or whatever? Um like I look at the three through five math and actually the band that's, you know, in and blue, the, you know, high, higher kids who are proficient, that's grown in the last two years and I don't, I don't know if that's because um of math expressions or, you know, coaches.
The norming changes too.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's a third variable in there, you'd wanna cross-reference that with your M step scores.
And I was gonna say, the one thing that we do have is there, you might remember um last uh six, seven months ago, the Harvard study showed that we had some of the most big, largest math cans at the elementary level in the state.
Right.
Um above where we were before COVID. Um so from that, and they used uh M step from that element for that, so there's something there.
Yeah.
Direct correlation of why, a lot of questions, but there's something there.
Yeah, it's kinda cool if you can begin to pull out some of the variables that can impact, you know, so that you're not just looking at these charts. These charts are not that far off from just raw data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um so what's really nice that we've got set up now is just so we're all, we've got the same assessment system, N W A K seven for math and E L A that we give in the fall and we give in the spring. So like that's nice because it's a nice, you know, coherent, consistent system. K seven, we have a fall, you know, screening of kids, we've got a spring, you guys are looking at the spring results. All of that is it's good to look at how did kids grow over the school year, it's also nice to look at year after year after year, what are the trends too. Um and then to sort of mirror that, starting in eighth grade, eighth through eleventh grade, we now have the same system for our P S A T, S A T, which are the assessments that come out of College Board, same people who own um the A P rung two. So we will be doing fall and spring testing for our eighth, ninth, tenth and eleventh grades, all with the P S A T, S A T. So there's the grade levels, so starting this year, we're testing them all twice a year, which is awesome cuz we get back results and can see where kids are. I put a little screenshot here of what kids actually see. And just so you're clear, kids actually own their scores, they own their accounts, they can follow with them. They do some great um college readiness coaching through College Board on their thing. They they say, student, you scored in this band, here are some scholarships that might be available to you. Here are some schools that in which you can align with, if kids put more information about things they're interested in, they can even get more tailored towards kids too. Uh Joe and Ben and I have looked a little bit at, they do have some educational post-secondary planning through there, it's called Big Futures. Um and as they develop that more, you might hear more about us wanting to partner with um that because it just attaches the student interest, um it attaches some information about the kid, how the kid is achieving, and then what are some available options? Um and then you see like, there's a reading and writing portion, there's multiple different like strands underneath that, there's a math portion, there's multiple strands underneath that. As the kids progress through the series, um the tests do get longer and they cover more content. The eighth grade test is the shortest, the S A T is the longest, you're still talking done in one day and less than a half a day. Um and then the standards to reach benchmark increase too. So um I invited our two secondary lead principals, Ben Berger, he's the lead at Central High School, and Joe Esper, who is the lead at West Senior High here, cuz I want them to sort of take over here and reflect a little bit on, you're gonna see some trends over time, so how did our students perform over time? Um and then you're gonna see some student scores for the spring uh P S A T and S A T versus grades. Right, as we talked about a little bit earlier, grades are like the most fastest feedback we give to kids and parents and we look at those a lot and we look at them on the backside, just so you guys know, we look at them through different student subgroups. Right, so we'll look at them through our special ed kids, we'll look at them through male, female, we'll look at them through grade levels. We also look at them through economically disadvantaged, through our E O L students. What are some other subgroups for student ethnicities? Um and then we look at them too through courses, what courses are kids struggling with? Um there were thirty-eight kids who failed Algebra one this year at both of our high schools. We know that is a huge indicator of off track for graduation. We have a list of those thirty-eight kids, they are gonna have some proactive meetings with counselors. Um they also look at them through teachers, we have teachers who are more successful with students who are below grade level or above grade level and where can, where does that match up with instructional practice they see in the classroom, how can they coach and support on that too?
That's what I was gonna mention was the teacher distribution tends to be really beneficial as far as when we're planning site-based professional development, um when we're thinking about intentional groupings and, you know, partnerships between teachers so that splitting that up and giving the teachers, so they'll come in in August and they'll get, um they'll see last year's kids cohort, how they did in the S A T. So we use that as like a launching off point to say, the kids that you were focusing on these skills, here's how they ended up. So like, let's look at the data as the dust has settled and then what does it look like planning forward? And here's your new cohort of kids and where they were. So we're kind of like closing the door on the cohort and seeing the achievement and the impact the teacher had on that group of kids and then, all right, now let's plan forward with the group you're inheriting and their current levels.
And a big shout out to our tech department, Sophie, who's our data wizard, I actually was emailing with her early this morning about getting all these attached to the right kids so that we can have that reflection with teachers. You guys are gonna see a really, really high level, all of that sort of happens behind the scenes. But what's more meaningful to a teacher is actually seeing the names of the kids they actually had last year in their E L A ten class and how did those kids do and making some patterns about what worked and what maybe didn't work and I need to do differently for kids who are at the similar achievement level for this year. And that's really important, but that takes a lot of work on the backside to get all the data to sift and sort correctly. So um I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Um so just a couple of big picture things, uh this was the first cycle that all of these tests were digital. We had piloted that on just a few of the grade levels early on. Um it was, I wanna like overstate it, I didn't say it was super smooth, but it was, it went really well.
Yeah.
Uh and if if you, you know, if you had students that were part of any pilots, like they didn't always go well. Uh often, we found out that was on College Board and they they had to do a lot of things to be ready to do this nationally. But our our tech department did a great job getting getting things ready. Uh Brian Gwinney at Central High, Kaylee Myers at at West, um and and it really went well. And like for years, you know, we kinda debated back when Jesse and I used to do assessment for the district, like do we get a good read on kids with digital testing? But really, when you look at it now, that's how they're taking the N W A test up through seventh grade or or early eighth grade. Um that's how they're doing all their coursework and a lot of the students actually do better in that digital testing environment.
Um and I would just say the efficiency, I just want you guys to think about this. When we talk about this number of kids, we're talking about thousands and thousands of tests. Before, we literally had boxes that came in, we had to store them securely and then we had to sort them and then we had to get them back and then remember, we'd always get the email, this wasn't returned with this and then go find that piece of paper and I mean, just the manpower for for those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just the fidelity and the security of the assessment that it's good, there were so many things that had to be done in forty individual classrooms before by hand. Um and you you could get a timestamp wrong on a sheet and the whole group of students gets reviewed and could be invalidated. It's all automated now, so all in all, that went really well. Um Ben mentioned some of the things that staff do with the data, it's not really the data you're seeing here, this is more a big picture. Um but we do that when staff come back in the fall and we also do it again in December after they do the the practice test in October, we get that back pretty quick. Um and then on the student end, like Jesse mentioned that score report there, there are so many useful tools on the student end. Uh if they wanna practice, uh if if they feel like a higher score gets them access to something, there's tons of tools there. I would say the thing is just to keep reminding families that those are there because um when a when a student takes a test, certainly at the end of eighth grade, very few are engaged in that idea, that they they wanna get to a particular score level to go to U of M or wherever they might wanna get to. Um but as they move through the grade levels, those tools continue to be there and there's there's a whole range of them. So Ben's gonna start with the um reading data.
See, you kicked it to me, Joe, because you just got signed out of your Google driver.
I I was fully prepared.
After I complimented technology.
It wasn't good enough.
I have the same relationship with the.
So we're gonna take you through some macro data here, so this is five-year trend. So the the highlight here is that this is a different cohort of kids, each red dot you see. So when you're looking at upper left corner, that's eighth grade there, those are five years of different eighth graders, so on and so forth. And so you can look at, this allows us to look at trends and so eighth and eleventh really pop out in reading and writing as far as having some pretty good upward trends. Um whereas when we look at ninth and tenth, it would be, what are we digging into here that's leaving us stagnant regardless of that cohort? Um you know, sometimes you guys get to congratulate and shake hands with the National Merit kids and you have some cohorts that um lean higher. But when you look at the five-year data, it really allows us that picture to say, you know, Josie, to your point, is it the curriculum? Are there specific teacher um strategies that we can get into? But the trends allow us to either celebrate and say, let's stay the course or hey, you know, we've given it um the fidelity of this five-year window, let's look at other options.
I just had a question about twelfth graders, don't they get one opportunity in October of their twelfth grade year?
No, the the school-based opportunities end in the spring of junior year. Uh and then those juniors, you know, they'll get their scores back, they got them back last week actually officially, although I know a lot of them got them sooner. Um then any of those S A Ts they do after that are on their own, they self-register, they can do one. There's usually a summer one between junior and senior year and then one right in the fall of senior year and that's kinda their last go at it.
That doesn't show up on our data, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the the same trend graphs in terms of mathematics, but not the same trend lines. Um so this looks a little bit different and as Ben pointed out, each of those dots is a different cohort, so you're not necessarily seeing one group of kids. Like if you look at eighth grade math, it climbed for a little bit, it came down uh the last two years, which just means the last two cohorts didn't do as well as the cohorts in front of them. Um that directly ties to what Jesse was talking about with the teacher feedback regarding the curriculum and it not being a great fit. And so that's a clear area of improvement for us, mathematics overall, but specifically when you see that drastic of a trend line and then you can connect it to the story of teacher feedback regarding the curriculum not meeting the needs.
And and the the kind of good news conclusion with that is we already had made this decision. Um I, we had done a survey in the mid-winter, it was clear the teachers were supplementing in eighth grade in particular, all over the place, which by the way, we love autonomy, we love our, we trust our teachers who are professionals, but there's also a ton of research that they're not curriculum writers. And when they're, when we're not having a coherent curriculum and just kind of doing whatever we feel is necessary, we don't get consistent results. Um and so we had already made the decision and so I had already worked to return our license in, get a full refund in credit. That that doesn't, it's not like a one phone call, like that took about six weeks to make it all happen and now that we're in the new fiscal year, July one, I can take that credit and reapply it to get back the licenses and the C C three, which was that curriculum they're using prior. Um I've also talked extensively with Ryan Ranger and Kristin Studeman, who are the middle school lead principals, about some things we're gonna do differently and some things we're gonna target. We've talked a little bit about staffing too, who are um who are our strong superstars in eighth grade math and how do we help build some capacity in some other areas too?
But overall, a couple of other things I'd mention with math uh that you'll see throughout, the the percentage of kids that are at or above benchmark, mathematics is always lower than reading and writing. Um you'll see that statewide, you'll see it nationally, um and you'll see that a little bit when we compare the scores to grading in a second. Um also keep in mind too, when you're looking at big picture numbers, it hides a lot of things that we wanna know and so we look at this a lot of different ways with teachers. Um you don't see the kids on the high end here, it doesn't, just tells you the percentage of kids that are at the benchmark or above. You know, some groups, we have way more kids over fourteen fifty or fifteen hundred, that really high score range. Um you can have a lot of kids right below the line of um of hitting the benchmark, which we're gonna kinda look at in the next graph. And sometimes those kids that aren't meeting the benchmark, sometimes they're they're near the top of it and sometimes they're super, super low. You know, and that's why sometimes at the high school level, we've brought in uh different courses. Years ago, we brought in the Critical Content Course and Mathematics to address some of that. And then some of the like the Thai course and the Titan nine, ten courses we do um are to address some of the students' needs so they can do math separately a different way, you know? So we're constantly looking at that, like the kids, the individual kids, like within these numbers, there's a lot you don't see with just the one dot for a cohort of three hundred or three hundred and eighty students.
Joe, I just, I apologize if I missed it, but um did you mention what the benchmark is? And I know for each one of these grade levels, that that score's gonna be different.
Yeah, it goes up.
Take the eleventh grade sixteen hundred max, what might be the benchmark?
Yeah, for, is it five twenty-five?
Yeah, I can pull it up.
So I wanna say, I shouldn't.
It's like ten point increments in each one.
Ten, ten to twenty points, yeah, I wanna say like eighth grade, that math benchmark might be four eighty and then it kinda climbs from there. We have a different graph where we look at this with the same cohort, kind of against that benchmark and as the benchmark goes up, does the line, does line stay flat or does the line go down as as the target moves up, you know?
Yeah, so the benchmarks for eighth grade is four thirty for math and then four fifty and then four eighty, five ten, that's the fall eleventh grade, that's the National Merit qualifier and then it's five thirty for the S A T. And for E L A, the bench, for English and right, reading and writing, they are slower, it's three ninety. For eighth grade, it's four ten, forty points lower for ninth grade, for twenty for tenth grade, that's sixty points lower, for sixty for eleventh grade and then for the S A T, it's four eighty, so fifty points different. And and all of those benchmarks are figured, the College Board figures them based upon then what the kids go and achieve in college and what grades they earn there and that's how they norm that and aggregate that. So we have no feedback on those benchmarks, um but they're consistent every year, so we like that at least. And that's how they norm that and aggregate that, so we have no feedback on those benchmarks, um, but they're consistent every year, so we like that at least, thank you.
So this is the, the real fun portion of the presentation, so buckle up. Um, this is, uh, on the right, you have the PSAT results and then color coded as the green and then the light green are met benchmark and approaching. And then on the left, you have the grades, so what grade the student earned in the teacher-controlled grade book. And so, when you look, um, you would hope that there'd be maybe a little bit closer as far as A, Bs and Cs, we could, would consider that kind of benchmark. You would hope that that, so when you look at ELA, eighty-seven percent of students earned a grade that met benchmark. Compared, or eighty-six percent compared to eighty-seven percent on the ELA test, that's great, we, that's a nice distribution. Whereas in math, you have eighty-six percent of kids earning an A, B or C and only fifty-one hitting benchmark. And so, for Joe and I, as we discussed in prep for this, it really, um, that backs the, the stringent grading. And we sometimes hear parents, um, having qualms with how their students being assessed in math. But we would actually argue that there needs more stringent grading in that mathematics because it's not, when they take a nationally normed test, they're not at that par. And so, what type of inflation is happening on the individual gradebook level? That's leading to that student and parent thinking that they have a higher knowledge grasp than they do.
So are you gonna write an editorial in the Record Eagle explaining this? I would love it.
I don't know where my job security stands, Beth, as Record Eagle publications go, but I'm willing to talk at Board Curriculum.
Uh, Mr. Berger will talk all day, um, about grading.
Grading for learning is what I'm going.
Evidence-based grading, it's a discussion we've had a ton, both the leadership teams at, at Central and West, uh, have really been digging into that and it's gonna be something we continue to talk about next year. So if you take, this is eighth grade, you know, and again, the, the two graphs on the right of each pair are the mathematics one. And then if you look as it jumps to ninth grade, um, you'll see that, I'm, I'm just looking at math specifically, English correlates a little, a little better between grades and, uh, the met benchmark. But if you look at math, you'll notice the number of As and Bs decreases significantly. Um, and you can see, it's actually, if you put the As and Bs together, it's kind of closer to what the math proficiency is there than what we saw in eighth grade there, you know? And it's not, it's not all about grading, but remember, grading is feedback, right? Grading is feedback to the students, so it's very easy, uh, in a traditional math sense to fall into the pattern of like unintentionally rewarding compliance behaviors. You know, turning in homework assignments, um, grading those things that are, are being completed and stuff versus as you move into high school and further into high school, you're gonna see more weight put on the assessments. Um, like can you, can you actually, uh, do all of those things in class in assessment-type format? It doesn't have to be a one and done, you can do revisions, you can go, the kids always learn it, sometimes they learn from their mistakes, you know, you can go back and you can, you can address that. But that is why Ben pointed out, sometimes we get negative feedback about that, like, you know, a student has always gotten an A in mathematics, there must be something wrong with your curriculum because now they have a B. Uh, it actually should be kind of like pointing to like, there's, there's some skills we need to boot up that they're gonna need for where they're going.
And, and each grade level has its different distribution, when we look at eleventh grade, if you'd go up, Joe, that has the highest math, like math variance. And those, that's the year that's the Super Bowl for us, when the kids are taking the SAT. And so, you know, eighty-six percent of students demonstrating proficiency is according to the grade books at fifty-five percent according to the nationally normed test. And this isn't like a, a mandate to our staffs around like certain number of As, Bs or Cs, but it is really taking a look at that, what are the tasks that we're assessing? And when are we giving students opportunity to develop, to show mastery and understanding? Because that will inherently mirror more of what they can do on that nationally normed test. When we take out variables that are either age-old educational practices or something that's been, um, just done year after year or would be compliance-based. And so, you know, when we look at the macro level stuff, that's what Joe and I talk about and then, you know, pair that with the trends we showed you earlier. And that's where you get kind of our PD scope for grading for learning and really kind of using our leadership teams to dive into that.
So I just wanna make sure I understand, um, when you look at the semester two grades, you're looking at the As, the Bs and the Cs. The Cs would be kids that you'd like to see meeting benchmark or approaching benchmark. So, you add up those three, get eighty-six percent in this example in math, you look at the PSAT results for math and it's fifty-five percent on this. You're saying, that's a big discrepancy, thirty-one percentage points.
I wanna look at that student that's getting a C in our gradebook and see how they're performing on the SAT and talk about where those skill gaps are.
Yeah, I, I would say the analogy a little bit is if I was a coach and, and I was preparing my kids to go play a championship game. If, if I haven't been giving them feedback all along that we're getting ready, it is misleading, right? I mean, the grades are what our parents and our kids see a lot, it's a method of feedback. Um, and so, is that feedback accurate for what that kid is, knows and is, you know, is able to do and does that translate to something external? So, I will say I mislabeled that graph, it should say SAT for a lot of concern about that.
Uh, and the, the last thing on these, I'll just point out, the two graphs on the right, that gray band in the middle, which is the approaching benchmark, uh, which means they were close. Um, it's always a group we focus on, but you know, you, you, just to kind of underscore the difficult job teachers have. Like, the, we don't have huge chunks of kids at any grade level sitting in that gray band, you know? Teachers are, have a lot of students that are pretty advanced and we have to contract, continue to try to push them when they're at that level as the benchmark moves up. And they get ready for work or they get ready for college, uh, but we're also dealing with like, you know, a group of students that are significantly below. A significant sized group that's significantly below, you know, those gray bands, uh, you know? And, and ideal world, the gold band would be, would be the narrowest and your gray band would be larger and try to get kids over the hump, but, um, the reality is that's not where it is.
And one, one more thing to throw into the mix here, which I am gonna fully recognize, this is not, um, something that would be popular for students and parents to hear. But I also have to just wonder about grade inflation, you know? I mean, there's a lot of pressure, I think, from parents and students, um, they put upon themselves and they make demands of teachers and try to get those better grades. So they, they can get into college, but then, like you said before, if it's miss, it's a misleading indicator of their, their actual preparedness. You know, I just wonder how much grade inflation also might exist.
Yeah, and it, it's a great point, Josie, and it really goes to, to the type of support students are getting at home around the dinner table? Or are they going home and working two jobs and where does that, how are we capturing mastery there? So, it does go down a really, a passionate rabbit hole that both of our leadership teams are kind of driving that. And, and again, not trying to like, you know, get pitchforks coming at us, but just do the best by our kids and parents as far as like communicating clearly what they know and are able to do.
Sidney, having sat on admissions board, you know, it, it's because not all grades coming at you are from the same level of institution in performance. You know, so we look at that, but then you'd also went to those national tests because that helped level some of that.
Yeah.
You know, um, grade point.
Yep, it's a very subjective measure.
Extremely, there's no way to get around that.
And so the more we can sort of hold our external measurements, you know, against it and sort of have these conversations and reflect. Are we surprised by this? Are there trends that we should, we could do differently to, you know, to, to motivate kids, right? If I was a kid who was getting a B but knew that if I needed to learn something deeper, would I press myself more and then would that translate over here? We, we think it would, so, um, that's a good segue into the next part of data that we have, which is hot off the presses. This literally was released yesterday morning, I pulled it up at like six thirty and couldn't believe it was all there.
It's awesome.
Um, is our AP exam results, so I'll let these guys talk about those.
Yes, yesterday was awesome for Joe and I because it's middle of summer, our offices are very lonely places and we got to have eighteen or nineteen congratulatory text message exchanges with these teachers. And, and the ownership that they have over these cohorts of kids because it's nationally normed is, it speaks to a lot of what we were just talking about. You know, there is no hiding in these courses, there is no, you know, it's really vulnerable when you get these scores back. And so our teachers, some of our best teachers were sending congratulatory texts and they're like, yeah, but there was two, two students I thought could do a little bit better, you know? They're, they're still grinding away, but, um, we have nineteen offerings, AP offerings and you see the numbers between our schools, seventeen, over seventeen hundred kids taking an AP test. Um, and we know that that's college-level exposure and we are, you know, well on our way through courses like pre-calculus and AP seminar and increasing the exposure. And, and how cool a mindset shift that we've got our math departments, um, going to kids who have, are on on-level Algebra II. And pumping them up to take pre calc because we have a hundred percent of our students pass pre-calculus AP test exam at both sites, which is pretty phenomenal. So, uh, this came out, this data came out yesterday, you see, and then listed below, we, a, a student can take a course that we don't offer if they feel like they want to. Um, if they have proficiency or if they're taking it through alternate means, so, you know, we had a student at Central take German language AP exam and get a five on it this past year. But we don't offer German at our side of town, so, um, below you see there's some other opportunities there as far as physics and, and other AP courses as well.
You know, the other things I'd point out with these enrollment numbers, obviously there's the, there, there's the enormous numbers that jump out at you. Uh, AP Gov, it's just a huge thing in TCAPs, Pageball and Tech Ready, it's like a, it's like a rite of passage, every kid feels like they need to do. And a lot of kids that don't see themselves as AP kids will jump into Gov, right? Environmental science has grown, Ben mentioned some of the newer ones to the curriculum, but keep in mind too, things like Art two D and three D, which are smaller numbers. Cause remember you split that over Central and West, this, this is both high schools combined in terms of enrollment. Those are usually comboed into other courses in a period, a lot of that is portfolio work that the kids work on independently and then they consult with their teacher. Um, so it's not like we don't have an Art three D class that runs as six kids at West and five kids at Central or something. Um, but also does underscore like, you know, one of the challenges we continue to work together on both sides of town is like, um, how we keep some of these smaller AP enrollment classes going, you know? You look at like the chemistry or the calc or, um, US history, some of those, again, that's, that's the total number with both high schools combined, you know? And part of what really benefits our kids is the large body of AP courses that we offer, usually sixteen to nineteen courses in a given year. Um, so it's just some of the challenges that we work on on the site level to keep those, keep those going.
Physics.
No, we, we will usually have, um, you see it in Ben's list, he talked about at the bottom, we usually have some kids take physics independently. Uh, we put it in the request list, we have not had a large number of kids at either high school, large enough to run a section of it in quite a long time.
I would think without math, that you would have a stronger physics component.
It's interesting though, Beth, because when you look at a student, you know, four years with us, AP Biology and the addition of AP Environmental Science as well as Chem. You know, I think some of that subject diluted and so it just hasn't had a home beyond those kids taking honors physics and then jumping into AP Chem.
I just knew AP Physics though was still offered at Central High School, is that still the case?
We do not have AP Physics, no.
We've not had enough numbers, we offer for enrollment.
You offer it, right? And at West, I don't think it's even in the course catalog, but.
We have not had it in, in years, honors physics is, numbers have increased, but no AP.
It'd be interesting sometime, just for, for fun, if I may, I'd love to look at the text for environmental science.
For AP Environmental Science?
Uh, yeah.
It's all online, right, through the college board, I think?
No, we, we purchase, this is one of the things that is unique about all of these, for our curriculum materials, we do have to purchase curriculum materials that college board, they have a list of what is the approved. Um, and you'll see some of those go through Board Finance on Thursday and come, um, and the curriculum department, those are, it's a fun, fun puzzle that Emily and I are putting together, so. But I can see if I can get you a copy of the, the environmental.
I can get back to you.
Ben, you might be getting to this, I was just gonna ask, out of the one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four exams.
How many unique is?
Well, and just like, what, what's the average number, freshmen?
Yeah.
Junior, seniors?
So there's your distribution as far as grade level goes, we have thirty-nine freshmen taking an AP course, all the way up to nearly half of our senior, and you know, half of our junior class is taking one. So it's cool that when you look at, out of the exams written, nine hundred and four unique students, so one in three TCAPs high schoolers at Central or West is taking an AP course. And it's definitely a balance depending on who you're talking to because, um, the one side of the coin is we don't wanna overwhelm students in keeping up with the Joneses and, you know, they, they need a life outside of school. The other is, how many students do we have when we're looking at that SAT data that may not think that they can take an AP course that had, they have the ability to? And so, again, that's more of that conversation of our teachers and counselors identifying those kids and pumping them up to take an AP course so that they have exposure and opening doors that they might not know they have post-secondary and talking to the student who thinks they need five AP courses from freshman year on to talk about what that path might look like? And how does it serve you and your end goals? Because again, I, we have students at both of our high schools that could take and could handle five all four years, but they would not be a well-rounded high school student. And they would probably not be able to go to a single social event. And so, it, you have to have that nimbleness to know your kid, to talk about it. So it's not just an all or nothing, I made the mistake of excitedly telling my staff, like, we're trying to pump these numbers up and some of, you know, the counseling staff said, well, there's some kids, we're actually trying to tailor to what they need and taper it down. So it is not a one-size-fits-all, it's not a rush to get a certain number, but it is cool to think over ye, the years, how more kids have had exposure to college-level courses. And in our journey for grading, for understanding and against nationally-normed items, it gives us the best picture of where our kids are.
So a few other things on that, like you'll see thirty-nine kids across the district taking an AP course as a freshman. Um, that tends to be like AP Computer Science is a very accessible one for freshmen, sometimes at West they'll take Human Geography, sometimes they'll take AP US. But you have to be a pretty advanced student to be able to do that competently. But the number of sophomores has really jumped up and we've, we've really like, this, this past school year in particular, we've really kind of monitored that and done a lot of messaging. Um, typically, uh, AP World was really the one AP that sophomores at both high schools took, it's a very challenging AP. But it's attainable for a sophomore and it's a good kind of like introduction to them about what a real, uh, heavy reading, heavy homework AP load is gonna look like. But what's come along the, the pipe is AP pre calc in tenth grade for our most advanced math cohort. Um, as Jesse mentioned, we had a hundred percent pass rate on that, you know, so it's, it's appropriate, but now, you know, you're also a sophomore and you see two AP titles in your course schedule, right? And then, um, we did a lot of, of work and our teachers really wanted to try AP Seminar in tenth grade, which we added this year, which was a huge success. Um, also saw a hundred percent, close to a hundred percent pass rate in AP Seminar. Um, but there will be a few sophomores who have three classes or half of their course loads has AP on it, which is a little, just from face value, like a little intimidating, you know? So there's a little bit of messaging that needs to go around that because the pre calc and the seminar for an advanced sophomore, a top third of the group is very accessible.
Yeah, and I would say we've heard some feedback from kids through some of the Student Advisory Council that they want three options, they want an on-grade level and honors and then an AP. And what we've actually found and we need to do a better job talking to our kids and our parents about what we actually like is an on-grade level and then an AP when, when appropriate. Because the AP gives that standard for colleges, what we've heard back from colleges is that calling it honors US, they're not sure what that means, that means nothing. And it means the exact same as regular US and all that's turned into is similar to the issues we've, we've been talking about in middle schools, it just sorts behaviors and it sorts kids. Um, not really based on academic ability or drive, um, where the AP has that national curricular standard. Um, colleges do see that as having sort of a benchmark and something that's objective that's out there. And so we really, we are trying to, you know, we phased out a regular pre calc and just gone towards AP because number one, we've seen our kids be highly successful on it, so it's very accessible. Our teachers are phenomenal on both sides of town, so why have both of those, it really, you know, it doesn't serve the purpose, our kids are ready for it. And so let's, um, ensure that they're able to get into those courses.
Yep. The, the other big decision point, um, it's similar to what we said about some of the SAT practice, some of these things that are there and it's hard to get, um, kids and families sometimes to connect to it. But the other decision point in, do I take three APs or do I take four or five, um, which is, I think it's rare when four or five is appropriate? Is to look at the AP Credit Policy search and that's, that's a really nice tool they have on the website, we sent it out yesterday when we reminded kids to go on College Board to check their scores. You can say like, I'm interested in going to Michigan State and you can look and see which APs they take and at what score. You know, everything we talk about here, um, we, we say like a three, a four or a five, those scores are passing. But it doesn't mean that like if you get a three on AP Gov, that Michigan State is gonna take it, right? And don't, you also shouldn't assume that like the more prestigious the institution, the higher score they will require, it's all, it's all over the place, you know? So, I don't think families do it as much as they should, but we also encourage them to consult that when they're doing their course request stuff and thinking about how many APs and which APs. You do reach a point too where, um, you know, if you, if you take four APs junior year and five senior year and you took a few when you were sophomores, you may get to college, realize. And you took a few when you were sophomores, you may get to college, realize they're not all taken, or you've knocked so much off the board, your freshman year, you're you're taking a lot of. Psychology classes and other things that are out of your interest area, you know?
Or or else you're having to take upper, upper level and you're competing with college students at a different level. Same time you're trying to assimilate this whole new experience and you'll see kids kind of drop back, drop off, drop out. You know, so you have to really be careful how you pace yourself.
Yeah.
Especially freshmen.
You really have to recognize every student is different and talk to your counselor and talk to your parents and kind of figure out like based on where you wanna go and what you wanna do. What's the best path for you, not necessarily what your friend who you've always sat next to, what they're doing.
And I, you know, the number on here I really like is that four hundred and eleven, like four hundred and eleven of our students this year took one AP, right? We know statistically that if kids just have success and they expose themselves, that they're more likely to think about post-secondary. Educational opportunities. Um, and so like we really love that that's the highest out of all of those as opposed to the seventeen kids who took five APs. Like, cool, great for you. Those kids are are sort of other end of the spectrum kids. Just historically, so you guys know, we pulled the numbers. So last year we had eight hundred and twenty-one unique kids take AP um exams. The prior year it was seven hundred and eighty. And so as you think about seven eighty to eight twenty-one to nine oh four and the student populations at both of our high schools. Have has slightly declined. So we, these guys have worked really hard to ensure that for kids that it's appropriate. How do we encourage them? How do we, sometimes it is that one-on-one conversation about you can do this, right? Well, how about some of those subgroups of kids who might be a first-generation college kid? Or um, whose parents don't know as much about this? How do we ensure that there aren't barriers, just inherent barriers there for these kids getting in, so?
Well then, also, I think it was in the Wall Street Journal, Josie's where I've been as well. They were talking about how they're actually lowering some of the. Uh, standard isn't the correct term, but they're lowering. What's expected on those AP exams, some of them, so that more kids do better.
Yeah, well, what they're doing is it's similar to what Dan was talking with NWA. They're norming and they're calibrating, you know? Um, cause again, much like the SAT benchmark score should predict how they do in freshman classes. The AP score should predict that they have the level of knowledge and skills. Um, of what they would need to to pass that freshman history course or the freshman bio course or whatever it is. So they're constantly like um, calibrating and norming that. So a lot of the scores have reset. We saw that in AP Lang this year, you know, so our pass rate went up a little bit, but it's not necessarily about like making the test easier. It's about making it more in line with, I mean, we will always see this with kids. They come back in December after their first semester in college and sometimes these kids are like. I thought college would be hard, you know, but they they took five or six AP courses and sometimes those were more rigorous. Than what they actually got to college and and took. So college board is just trying to bring those a little more into alignment over time.
Personally, just Ava, my my oldest, just did her bachelor's in three years. And she still says that her AP Lang course at West seniors is the most challenging course she's ever had.
Wow. The next slide here has some results for you guys on those.
Yeah, this is great. When you look at uh, the pass percentage, again, Joe spoke to, we call that a three or higher. Just when we're looking at the macro data, but it is, it's just, you know, important to note that, you know, what universities will accept credit varies great deal. But when you look at the global pass percentage to ours, we are higher in TCAP's in every single course except AP three D. And again. That sample size last year was single digits. And so that like is a real point of pride. Um, and then we also have graphs when we look at throughout the state of Michigan, how do we do? And we continually um, are higher than the state. And global averages in most all of our courses.
Yeah, um, Joe, I just wanna say thank you for raising that point about the threes, fours and fives. Um, because that is, we don't wanna mislead parents and students that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I've seen that firsthand. There are some highly competitive colleges out there that will only accept a five. For credit or placing out of the test and but.
Yeah, and strangely, there's colleges that are not competitive that will only take fours. It's arbitrary, you know, every institution can decide.
Yeah, that's right. Um, and on the money side of things, I've made this point last year, but I think it's worth repeating. If you're a parent and you know, you're you you're paying approximately a hundred dollars per test. Um, say your kid takes ten over four years, that's a thousand dollars, but to Dan's point, you're buying. You could be buying your kid a a semester or even a full year, and I have known some parents to do that. That's, it's like going to NMC dual enrollment, you know, you are saving a lot of money. Um, related to that is is, you know, the equity drum and I do really appreciate the efforts. Through the buildings to make sure families know that cost isn't a barrier. Um, God willing with our new budget, that we can still continue to support that, but I just think that's really important when counselors also meet with the students. When they're registering in February for next year, that that kid knows cost, you know, is not a barrier. There are scholarships available for them. John, did you wanna say anything there about?
And then the last slide here just gives you the distribution of uh, all of this, all seventeen hundred scores together here. Um, I was, I've been asked for this before, right? What percentage are fours and fives and what does that look like? Nationally for most of the tests, it's it is a bell curve that sits right around three. Um, as you pull up, there are some that are different, but most of them bell curve right around three, so. Again, really impressive. And I will say, just when you talk to anyone in this region, there is not another district. That can offer this many courses, nor is there another district that gets this type of outcome. And this really is a testament to. How hard our teachers are working, how hard our counselors are working to get our kids in our classes and how hard these guys are working, just to make sure that it all runs. Really smoothly for our kids and our families.
Yeah, I mean, I think this graph is amazing. I always look at this, again, going back to that three, four or five and lumping that together and calling it a pass rate. When you look at our kids and Traverse City wrote as many fives as they wrote threes, like you you will not see that a lot of places. That's really hard.
Are we able to access the test scores of private schools? No, so only public schools data are available?
Yeah, and it's pretty lagging.
And we do share time, right, with some of our AP courses with our local?
We do, their their scores are not in here. These are all actual TCAP's kids, but almost all the AP courses taught at at least GTACs are act. Are taught by TCAP's teachers and we oversee that similar curriculum and all that good stuff.
Yep.
Okay, so we did, I know we're approaching two hours for this meeting. Um, but we did stick this in here knowing that we wanted to potentially have a discussion, um, especially after all this data around the strategic plan. Um, I just sort of summarized, Dan and I summarized the five areas. Obviously, there'll be wordsmithing in there. Um, so, and then Dan and I did, just give you an idea, Dan and I kind of went through some different schools in the state, what their strategic plans look like. How do we organize the information? We really liked this one in particular, while we've we've tweaked it a little bit. But like, for example, this would be under goal number one, which is increase um, academic achievement. And then maybe we'd have multiple focus areas, right? But one focus area around literacy, one focus area around mathematics, one focus area around graduation rates is sort of what Dan and I were thinking. And then within those focus areas, what are those uh, measures of success? That would be some of those hard outcomes there. I know there's lots of words and it's tiny on the screen. Apologize. And then for Dan and I and our principals and our leadership teams, really like, what are the strategies and activities we're gonna do? To reach those measures of success, right? We can say all the measures of success that we want, but they actual, we have to move the system and change what we're doing. Or else we'll be back to the flatline graphs, right? So um, this was one template that that Dan and I have played with. Uh, what would it look like and how it presents?
Right.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
And that is, you know, there are people that talk about teaching to the test and being concerned about that. Um, and I'm not quite sure how you could teach to the test. For ELA or math in general, but it seems to me. That what we also wanna make sure, and I'm, I don't know how to measure this, is to make sure that students are able to use this. Take it out of the classroom and actually use it as part of their approach to daily living.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think, I don't know how to measure that. I don't know if the tests that we have currently are able to encompass that. But I think that's something else to kind of keep in our heads.
The only thing on that note is um, something that was brought up by trustee Ty Schmidt. Um, you know, knowing that this was on our agenda today, there are a number of career and college readiness. Um, benchmarks that are collected by Michigan School of Data.
My School Data.
Yeah, my school data. Um, so that career college readiness, I mean. Especially that career side, I think of very practical skills and I personally. Yeah, I mean, it it is, but like to best point, um, yeah, that that, that's just one benchmark I do know that's out there. And I don't, I'm not intimately familiar with it.
I'm I'm pretty familiar with it. So a lot of it comes from uh, national um, data, the the colleges report. Um, I'll be honest with you, it's always been felt a bit, a bit sketchy. Of, you know, those that report, those that don't, it's based off of, you know, they don't necessarily have great numbers that track kids from high schools, especially.
Yeah, we know.
You know, so all that, so it, we've always used it as a point, but like, you know, like how strong is it? They don't know. Um, and then the other part you have, like, you have to ask is. I I think there's some early on ones, but I guess. How responsible are we for a four-year graduation rate in college? Like, there's college readiness, but the college has a whole lot of, you know, components there, so I I guess I would just. I'd be weary of especially long-term college post-secondary rates. Initial maybe, but like I said, the my school data, what that feeds into the, you know, it it's a little. You know, it's it's just, I've actually had the chance when in one of my former districts that was much smaller to compare that data to what we knew were fact. And it didn't match up.
Yeah, I I, and I did see another metric, actually, um, it's, and this comes from Governor Whitmer, I believe. It's called progra. It's called sixty by thirty, sixty percent, um. I don't think proficiency is the right word, but readiness, whatever, by twenty thirty.
It's sixty percent attendance.
Oh, okay.
By twenty thirty.
Some kind of.
Full secondary opportunity.
Right, or a certificate, a professional certificate program, right? Okay, sixty percent participation by twenty thirty. So that's another.
We should be looking at it, I think we may already.
Yeah, so those metrics do exist, but but yeah, I understand they, it's like.
And I'm not trying to, I, you know, I would love, I would love if that data was solid, I'd love it, you know, just, you know, we, as a state, we don't do a great job of tracking kids. Especially post-career.
Yeah.
Like, you know, of of having a connection. We don't have anything that ties us to kids and alumni to be able to get that info.
Um, Dan, if you just wanna roll back to that measures of success, you know, one thing I noticed in here. Under uh, measures of success, five and six, um. Those also to me look like they overlap with goal four of developing high-quality staff. So I wondered if some of these, and the and the same thing came up in my mind under strategies and activities for number two. Ongoing professional learning for educators. Some of these you might be putting in towards both goals. Or you might have a huge list for this first goal and like a small, you know, and move things around, but I just, I noticed that. And that's gotta be hard to kind of parse out what goes where.
Yeah, and and keep it to a point where it's doable. You know, I, one thing that is living, so we've lived strategic plans. Blueprint things at building principles for the last several years and. And I think in order to, we talk about big data and we talk about that flatline that we wanna address. We wanna make these strategic plans usable at a school level with admin. Um, so when I talk about like one of the, stuck here, there, when I bring it, bring up again, we talk, this is back in March now. We continue to talk about um, data that we'll use for for metrics. So we can take all of our NWA now, again, shout out to our wonderful tech team, Sophie House, with with all the data we do for elementary. Um, that we can take our NWA, we bring it into our system, we're able to to segregate economically, um, disadvantaged versus non, right? So we talk about that achievement gap, we'll also be able to make goals. Again, I would focus on that, you know, the the yellow line. Or the blue and the greens and and combining them as far as achievement goes. So my my point is that, you know, we, as far as is this data being usable, I can then take this graph that's three, five. I can make it for each school, you know, and then those principals can then bring that data into staff and say, hey, this is one of our goals. As far as strategic planning goals, cause that hasn't been done in the past, right? As far as our strategic planning, we make some connections. But with an actual data goal, it'd be nice to get this in front of every person that's in our district. Um, to really address again, I, i- if we're not gonna have necessarily a big financial push. To address some of these areas, then I think we have to get buy-in from every single educator in order to do something about the flatline.
Yeah, and I think we just need to be careful, the more goals we add. The more data points across your, you know, dashboard, the less we have found staff and principals. There's just, it it's just too much, right? Like if we have a math goal and then we have a math goal for these kids, and then we have a math goal for these kids. And then we have a math goal for these kids that applies to these kids, but not these kids. It just ends up being, nobody knows what they're supposed to be looking at and so. Everybody's looking different ways or everyone's just looking up. I don't know.
That's why, and then again, I brought in the, that's their ELA MSEP. And I know there's some discussion about including MSEP. You know, the issue is, right, MSEP was done in the spring, we still don't have the scores back, right? And so getting actual data in front of teachers, that's why NWA is lockstep as far as, we are gonna do NWA in the fall. That data is processed in data meetings. We make our tier-two groups. It is addressed in our in our PLCs. MSEP is not, right? Cause we we get that back in the fall. And quite honestly, with six PLCs. You know, we run out of time eventually as far as addressing all kinds of data, so I would definitely lean, I mean, if we have to do both, if that's a priority. Um, but I would lean heavy towards NWA that it's a data that's in front of teachers, in front of admin all year long.
And and, yeah, I mean, I I definitely see the benefit of NWEA too as a parent, you know, you, your kid comes home and is excited about. You know, their score and.
And we do have that correlation. Again, it's not perfect, but the idea that, you know, sixtieth percentile and higher does, is proficiency on MSEP. Um, that's suffice as far as academic goals.
The only issue with MSEP, and I mean, you know this, is that that's what goes into my school data. So. Is there a transparency issue with, you know, would anybody?
There is a conversation happening at the state level of inputting I Ready and NWEA into my school data. There is that conversation a part of the Michigan Data Hub, so you don't know how quick that'll come to fruition, but that is in the conversation, right?
So we can continue, I mean, by law, I think we have to report the MSEP data, right?
It automatically, we don't. They automatically, the state does it.
So I mean, that's gonna be publicly available and we can always see that as a board, but it doesn't have to be in the strategic plan.
No.
Performance indicators or, you know, performance measures, whatever you wanna call them, that the teachers are really focused.
My fear would be we put it in there and then it's just not used.
Yeah.
Right, it's just there as a, you know, placeholder.
It's a technicality.
And when it comes down to the school, individual school building level improvement plans, I mean, as long, at least should also be aligned. Between the district strategic plan in there so that everybody's looking at, on the same page, looking at one data source or another.
That would be NWA, yeah, if we really wanna prioritize.
Yep.
The thing is, I I like, I mean, your data is cool, the way you're uh, addressing it, I think is. Is so refreshing, kind of. Um, and I think that's laudatory. My concern though is that why do you have this kind of information? You have it so that people can use it. It it, it needs to have practical applicability. You know, it's like answering the question my father would do. You know, he'd go and he he would fix something and he would look at me and he would say, okay, Miss Five Years of College. What do you think about that? You know, it's sort of like it's not all academic in life. And to be able to critique things, to be able to think your way around to evaluate AI. That's going to be important. And we need to give kids confidence in how to use this. Uh, and so that's a whole other discussion, but this, this isn't where we stop. Where we think of how we're doing a good job.
Yeah, I agree. That elementary focus, I think that all builds off our reading. You know, cause I know often we have discussions, you bring up the social studies and the science and proficiency around that and state measures. Um, that it's all based in reading and that's why we're so heavy in that tier-one reading in in elementary.
Reading is is one heck of a gift when you have it, but so is being able to proportionally look at things. That mathematical skill or the way that you are driving a car into a curve and you think about centrifugal force. You know, because that's how you. You know, because that's how you're gonna get through the curve.
Dan, I just want to ask you about this particular slide. I think what you wanted to show us on the right here, that's the ELA proficiency, right, up at the top, and then that below.
These are just clips from our March.
The five-year trends.
Again, showing the achievement gap, right? There's, I was just wanting to show also, we can do it with NWA also, right? Where we have all students, we have economically, non-economically disadvantaged, with the same ideas as those bands.
Right, right. So, if we're looking at goals that are, you know, meaningful and achievable for, you know, to align with our three-year strategic plan, I know the board and the administration collectively, we all want to raise the bar for all students. We also want to help narrow that achievement gap between low-income and other students. If we, are those two goals at odds with each other, or do you look at them as sympathetic? You know, like, in other words, if we try to raise the, the, you know, narrow that achievement gap, does that come at any cost to the middle and high learners? In terms of like, their, their growth might not be as high because we're trying to raise the bottom more.
I mean, I think it depends on how you distribute resources. It's a resources, that's what I was just thinking of. You know, like, if you put more tier-two, you know, supports, you know, you are, you know, you might not be limiting class size, because you have interventionists now. You know, so I think that's a balance. That's a balance you have to, you know, we always have to, I think we do our very best to try and say, "How can we spread that dollar in staffing to do the best here and the best here?" And, and I think that that's the approach we've taken. And I do think, you know, that we want to, we're trying right now to figure out, "How can we shift that a bit to do more tier-two supports, especially middle school?" We haven't had any at high school, you know, and so-
Tier-two support?
Yeah, and so that, that's, that's where that comes down, tier-two supports. Where, where are you placing them, and how much are you doing with that? That's where the bread is, especially, I think, with our economically disadvantaged kids. How much of a, you know, in the RTI pyramid of, how many scoops of ice cream do you give a kid? Every kid that is economically disadvantaged, the more scoops you give them, the more chance there that they're going to achieve. But you only have so much ice cream.
Right, right, I would say in the high school, the biggest tier-two support has been the TIE program, right? But to run the TIE program, and both Joe and Ben know this, it costs more FTE. So then, so do we not run some of those AP classes that you just saw phenomenal data for? Because we only have twenty kids, right? Right now, we'll still run that class, but then we gotta run TIE. John is exactly right, like, if we provide more tier-two. For me, I think tier-two is where, where we can move the biggest group of kids, and we can, we do not have a systematic tier-two math support across elementarys. Elementarys just kind of-
We need that.
We a hundred percent need that, right? Which means depending on what elementary school you go to, it depends on what type of support they have sort of left over from title or at-risk dollars.
As far as individuals, we have the programming, but Jesse's right, there's no set. We go all-in on reading first. And then even more to that is, depending what school you're at and the title funds they have available, do you have a certified teacher doing tier-two versus an aide doing tier-two, right? Westwoods who has fifty thousand dollars, Traverse Heights has three hundred thousand dollars. They're gonna have FTE, right? A certified teacher doing tier-two versus an aide, and do you get the quality of tier-two intervention? So, and you have the same, right, you still have the economically disadvantaged kid at Westwoods in the tier-two, are they getting the same quality as a, you know, economically disadvantaged? Blair just says their, you know, their percentage of population is more economically disadvantaged. And so, like, here's, here's an interesting one that hit me that, I think I'm gonna say this right, but please speak up if not. Eastern Elementary does not have, you know, the percentage, you know, of their students that are economically disadvantaged. However, because they're, they're large, they're five hundred students, they have more economically disadvantaged than Traverse Heights. At-risk.
By just now.
Their percentage is low, but their number is high.
But the number of students.
Yeah, right.
You know, if they were two separate schools, one of them would, would be, would be a title-one building. Yeah, we, I mean, we did this, it almost turned out to be a case study when we closed Interlochen and brought those kids into Westwoods. Those kids received full title support, social work every day. We bring the seventy kids into Westwoods, now we don't have any title support. Even that didn't bump us up to my first year at Westwoods when we- So, in a way, it is an inequity from federal and state resources. You know, of saying this building, because it reaches a threshold, gets all those resources. But theoretically, I think there's also an argument that because it's so much of a large preponderance of economically disadvantaged students, more of the direct resources should go, go to it. You know, you can only split a teacher across, maybe you could sometimes do it across two buildings, but not four. You know, so, that, that's the hard part. So, as a district, we have put an extra FTE at Blair and Traverse Heights. And that, and a, and a Westwoods, for instance, doesn't get that, or a Silver Lake. I think Silver Lake and the Long Lake are the two right now, we're talking a lot, they're on that bubble, right? But, you know, like, you may remember when we were out-
Central grade.
In Central grade, right. But you might remember when we were at Silver Lake, that the staff were like, "Don't forget, we have title needs too."
Right, exactly.
Well, they got the larger chunk of the Interlochen. And, and this is the hard part that we deal with, that, I wish I had better answers, I really do, from a resource standpoint, of, of being able to provide more with that. And, and if we do, it just has to come to the cost of something else, that at some point, we have to decide.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why I asked the question, because, you know, I would like to close the achievement gap, but I also want to make sure that our middle and high performers don't suffer as well. You know, that their potential is limited.
You're helping your debt compressing.
Right, right, exactly, don't want to limit their-
In the, in the end, I'm not sure you can achieve that goal with the resources we're given from the state.
And it's not all on the schools, it's-
Yeah, but we've kind of collectively agreed, these were two big-picture goals, and if they're really at odds and we need to prioritize one or the other, then that's gonna-
That is gonna be a conversation in future budgeting, you know, as we move forward.
But also, I mean, in August, when you present the objectives and the performance measures that, you know, to-
But I guess it's the staffing, all that's already figured out for this next year. Like, you know, we don't even know if we have what we have.
Right.
You know, so you're gonna be a year away from being able to make shifts in budget that might prioritize some things over others.
And that's sort of, I mean, I know we've talked a little bit about three-year, five-year, what is that goal range? We, there's not much we can shift now for next school year, to be honest. Dr. Van Wagner's, our staffing, we've allocated the resources to the sites, they've hired their people. So, looking at a little bit longer data will allow us to get some data back and respond. I think at one of the board meetings, I was asked, "Is the percentages okay?" And I was like, "Well, that's a tough one to ask." Percentages are okay, we can talk every year about where do we maybe change some of those. I just wish we had more of it to start with, so that the percentages came out differently. Can I just have more ice cream, please?
It'll make you sick.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and this is particularly tough year with the state budget.
Yeah, it is.
Through twelve not being passed yet, but it sounds like we haven't done it, we're not planning to allocate our dollars differently for this next year than we have in the past, right?
Well, a bit, because we have less. I mean, our at-risk dollars, we had a million-dollar cut. So, we actually have less resources this year than we've had in the past.
And we're unsure about where our federal funds are coming in at this point. We've been told that our Title II, our Title III, and our Title IV funding were not funded at the federal level. Title II is professional development, Title III is our ELL, our English Language Learners, and Title IV is also professional development and development of our staff. So, at this point, that would be almost a half a million-dollar cut as well.
Well, I want to thank everybody for their patience and diligence sticking here with us this long. I just want to try to wrap things up, and I wanted to say a couple of things. One is just respect for you guys doing all this hard work, as Beth said. You know, the graphics, all the data analysis has been great, it's very useful to the board. And I think when, in August, when you do present your draft proposal for the performance measures, if you can show us like where we are versus where we want to go, I think that would be helpful, like, so that we're not seeing in a vacuum, like, increased proficiency by X percent, or we don't know what the current proficiency, like, we're all gonna need that reminder. Where, where is our proficiency now, is it forty percent or eighty percent, sixty percent?
You think you need a one-year and you want all five again?
Whatever you've got, I mean, you don't need to create anything new. I think like what you presented today was great, just to show, like, those graphs, where we're seeing, okay, this is really flat over five years, or we've seen some growth or some decline. And then that helps us say, okay, yeah, where do we want to go from here? The other thing is, like, I, I looked back at our April first curriculum committee, committee where you guys did the learning series on attendance, and there's just such great data you pull together for that, on the twenty percent plus of our students who are chronically absent, you know, ten percent or more of the whole school year. And there was a slide that you had about how to improve attendance rate through strong, positive, and supportive culture. And I really see these tying in, not, they, they should relate to academic achievement, but they really explicitly relate to our strategic goal and connectedness and well-being. So, the positive relationships, the belonging within the community, the recognition of achievements. I know in elementary schools, we used to recognize perfect attendance, those sorts of things, experiences during school day and outside, and then communication to parents about attendance. I think that's really the key that we've got to go after. So, through building newsletters, like the cell phone policy, I've seen that since the board changed policy two years ago. The district's social media, flyers, back-to-school orientation nights, parent-teacher conferences. I think just promoting the benefits of regular attendance, like, it does lead to better academic outcomes and better connected kids and graduation on time. So, I just would love to see something about trying to reduce our chronic absenteeism, more, more time learning, we need to better outcomes to support our strategic plan, multiple goals. So, with that, any other input from trustees? Okay, and we've got our celebrations and successes then. Thank you guys so much for the strategic plan discussion, that was great.
Just a short couple ones. Some photos from our end-of-the-air joint principals, it's a great time, had by all. Three hours of reflection on-
Sure, if I didn't say otherwise.
And, and planning for this next year. It's just, we have a really, we have a really great group of building administrators who, who, you know, you've seen their two goals, right? Number one is to increase the student achievement and to close gaps. And then number two is to manage everything else that goes into running a school building, so that they can keep their eye on number one, and we just have a phenomenal group, so Dan and I have been very thankful.
Our robotics camp, this was at Central High's IMC, so Dr. Van Wagner secured some funds to buy those robotics kits, and now I think we've doubled that here as we start to, start to look at building an elementary robotics program. So, we started here just, and again, some, some side positives of this is, you know, this is a fundraiser that helps us offset some leave costs. So, we clear about, about two thousand a camp that we can then kick back, and then help with our friggin' reduced participants during, during the school year. So, we ran two sessions, they filled up in about three days. So, next year, we're gonna be looking at, probably doing once a week, five or six sessions, so. It was great, the highlights of the space, all the parents were super positive. Central High, I know that West was under construction, we thought about doing on both sides of town, but we just did Central High, robotics coach was great to work with, also their tech guy, so that was awesome, to kind of combo that together, so. And it has some student volunteers, right? We did, yep, the robotics team had student volunteers.
Raptors there.
Raptors. And then also, we just wanted to highlight, these are three different high school groups that went on international trips, right? School gets out, and then they all jump on planes, and as you can see, go to some pretty, pretty cool places. This is from both Central and West, different groups of kids. And now they're sort of all back home and in the swing of fall sports, probably, and activities and those sorts of things, so. And great, we thank our teachers who do this too, by the way. I mean, these were all led by teachers and who don't get compensated more for this, right? They have chosen to go through the process of doing an international trip with students, which, by the way, is, is, there's a lot of logistical things for their protection and for our kids and families that they go through. But I'm super thankful to our staff that give up some time to take our kids abroad.
So, this is Italy and what was it?
Italy, and then-
The upper right is Greece, and then Italy is on the left.
Yeah.
And the lower right is West.
Yeah, West Senior High, Mexico.
Great job, thank you to those teachers and chaperones.
Everybody went to the Middle East, my goodness.
Okay, well, if there are no other items, we will just announce that our next board curriculum committee meeting is Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, here at the Administration de Glen Loomis Building, and that will be at eight-thirty AM. Thank you again, everybody, for your diligence and great discussion today. We are now adjourned.